Okay, it's seven o'clock, so I'll call this meeting of the Westmoreland City Council to order. It's May the 20th, 2021. We're meeting tonight, and before we get started with our devotion and our pledge, I have a presentation that I want to make. Devante, if you'll come forward, please. Good to have you tonight. Devante has taken off from work so he can be here with us tonight. We've been putting this off for over a year now because of COVID, so we're excited to have him here. We tried to work this out to do it on his birthday, but the weather didn't work for us. But the city of Westmoreland, the city council and the city council ladies, Mr. Lee got this together, and on behalf of the city of Westmoreland, the Westmoreland Fire Department, we're going to present this citizen award to you. And this award is presented to Devante Hallfrisch in recognition of his heroic actions taken on the night of March 8, 2020, when he quickly responded to assist a family with evacuating their residence when it had called on fire. On the night of March 8, 2020, while returning home from the store, Devante Hallfrisch noticed that a neighbor's house was on fire. Devante, knowing that the family of this residence was inside, he quickly responded and started beating on the front door. There was no response from the occupants, so he made his way to the back door and started beating on that door. One of the occupants at this time was awakened and answered the door. Still, as imagine if he was a sound sleeper like I am, it was one eye open, maybe one eye closed. But in a still half-asleep stage, the occupant did not know what was going on. At that time, Devante entered the residence and assisted the family to safety from the burning residence. Without the heroic actions of Devante on that night, the outcome of this situation may have been very, very different. So we congratulate you, and we want to present you with this plaque. And Senator Farrell Hale sends this along to you also. I don't know what it is, so it might be a check for $10,000. So I wish you well. Thank you. Ed, would you all like to come up also?
If I could say one thing, you know, y'all congratulate me. To be honest, I did run the fire, but it was God who called me. And, you know, I really have to give all glory to Him, because it is through Him that I was able to do that. He is the voice for the voices, and He dispatched His angels that night. You know, so all glory to God, and I'm so thankful that I got the opportunity, you know, to help y'all out. And that's all I was about to say. I appreciate everything that y'all have done, all y'all. You know, I've talked to you for a while now. I know you pretty good on you all my life.
Former student right here. I just gotta say that.
He's come a long way. He can vouch for you there.
Absolutely. I can remember when he was just a little sixth grader. He may have been in a little bit of trouble, but I tell you what, to hear him, you know, just what he just claimed just now, proclaim God, I'm real proud of you.
Real proud.
Real proud of you.
Our God is the law.
Yes.
Can't ever forget that. That's about it. I appreciate it.
Pastor, if you'd like to come forward?
Sure.
We're glad to have you tonight.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. Let me also say congratulations. We were kind of part of that in that they ended up spending some time with us after they were looking for a place for a few days. So that worked out well, and that's because this community is so good to its people. Said in the paper how much I appreciate the Fire Department and the Police Department. And let me also add the city workers and sanitation workers who do a great job. You guys are awesome, and we take them for granted, and they're never not happy. Whatever you're paying them, you're doing a good job, because they're really happy people. Maybe they're already happy people despite that. I wanted to talk for just a moment about Teddy Roosevelt, who was a person who had a reputation for being very frank and direct. In 1900, a year before he became president after President McKinley was assassinated, he wrote this, he said, "No community is healthy when it's necessary to distinguish the politicians from the fellow citizens by claiming the politicians are honest." And he said, "It's not just enough that a public official should be honest. That no amount of honesty will be good if the public servant is also not brave and wise. The weakling and the coward," he said, "cannot be saved by honesty alone." And so leadership requires two virtues that seem very simple until they become very inconvenient, and that's to be honest and to be brave. And I'm going to ask that you guys do that. All of you have earned the right to be here tonight by winning the trust and the votes of the people of Westmoreland, but along with that honor comes a duty of humility and integrity in public service. So let's settle our hearts for just a moment before you begin and go to God in prayer. God of mercy and justice, thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for the opportunity we all have to serve the people of our city. Thank you for every citizen, every household. Father, help us all to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with love and restraint. Father, give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are all stewards of Your authority and not ours. Guide us to be the leaders Your people need. Help us to see the humanity and the dignity of those who disagree with us, to treat all people, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence Your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of Your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of each human person. We ask this as your daughters and as your sons, confident in Your goodness and love, and in Jesus' name we pray. Let the people say, "Amen." Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Would anyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keisha, if you would call the whole place?
Ted Brown?
Here.
Alicia Head?
Present.
Eric Kirkman?
Here.
David Lee?
Here.
Brian Smalling?
Here.
Chairman Wilkerson?
Here.
All council members are present. We have the board, so we can continue with the meeting. We might make note that our attorney, John Bradley, is not here tonight. So the next item, we will adopt the agenda.
Make that motion adopted, General Master Mayor.
Sir.
Councilman Brown makes the motion. Councilman Lee makes the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is public comments. Mr. Phil said he wanted to address the council on... I'm not sure what's on here that you want to address us about.
Did you... Would you come up here, please? I live between 231 and Finchery Drive. My name is Phil Gray, and this has been going on... This started two years ago, but because of the lady that lives across the street from me. When you were there, she said it doesn't cross the road. I never took pictures, because I just thought people would believe me. Look there, it's crossing the road. I'm having to redo my yard. I put a berm to keep the water from coming down in my yard. And if nothing else, I would appreciate a letter that if you're not going to do anything, why, you're not going to do anything. So then I can go to the next step. But I don't want y'all to think that I'm a liar. Sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less. What really made me mad is my neighbors. You couldn't find a better neighbor than Mr. Hunt. The people come to see him, and here's all these old people, and I got a berm, and they just barely get out of the car and start tripping. That's what really made me mad. So I want something done. Y'all want to look at the pictures?
Please.
I wasn't going to get mad, but...
Mr. Smalling?
I'm an old person too.
Yes, sir.
The first time it wasn't him, it was the other guy. He said, "No, the sewer, you can't do it, it's got a sewer line." Well, I know how deep the sewer line is. I'm one of the water lines. And I've been looking at all the court cases. I just haven't went that far yet. And I don't want that berm to stay there, but I got to try to build my yard back. So far, spent $1,700. But I got to do more, and then maybe I can anyway with the berm. But it's not right for one citizen to be treated unfairly, because another citizen that lives across the street has been here forever. And Miss... She's not here today, Miss Carter. Last time she was up on the city council, nobody come out, nobody say a word. And I'm not going to have it anymore.
Are you referring to Miss Frieda Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Smalling?
Which is akin to the person that's across the road.
Okay, I'm not aware of it, so I'll call them.
Well, I know you weren't here.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smalling, what do you have to say about all this?
I went out there, actually, I met out there with Jerry, and we did look at it, we looked at the pictures. I contacted Brian Griffin, the engineer, and he was supposed to be out there to look at it with me and Jerry. And the day that he had the appointment to meet with us, he called, it was a family emergency, and he didn't make it out here. That was on Wednesday, because that was like three weeks ago. And I haven't heard anything back from him as far as to when he was going to try to reschedule that. But we have looked at it, trying to do something about it, because I'm going to get him out there to look at everything, because there is a valve right there, and there's an existing ditch that was there. And the ditch that's there is going to be pushing our right-of-way. It's not actually, the existing ditch is not actually on our right-of-way. So to get it on our right-of-way, we're going to have to dig it right beside that valve. That's why I want the engineer out there to look at it and make sure that everything is like it's supposed to be, and that we're going to be able to get the fall like he's needing to get the water out of his yard, because it's not just in that one spot they refer to. It's coming down the road, is what he's saying as well.
Yeah, and you're going to have two new houses in this front. And that other lot, it just cleared everything away. Nothing, it's going to be dirt. And that's just where one of them is, right there, it's coming across.
That will give everyone a chance to drive out and look at it, hang on, and then it'll work study.
Mr. Carter was right. It didn't come across the road until about, it started two years ago, trick, trick, trick. Soil builds up, especially when stuff comes down from low out the yard. It didn't, but now, like I said, I didn't get mad until I saw all the old people seeing one of the finest men I've ever met. And then comes and says why, tripping over that dang berm.
Are you talking about the berm that...
I had to put a berm in there to keep the water.
That you put over in your yard?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, that ditch you're talking about, the same thing y'all did to that house in front of that house on Everston Springs, in front of the BFW. A ditch like that would help tremendously. But you're letting somebody dictate what y'all do that belongs to y'all, your right-of-way. That doesn't make sense.
Can I ask you a question? Who's dictating? I'm clueless.
Well, I think Miss Borges is, because she's been here forever. I've lived there 25 years. Like I say, it didn't start about two years ago, because soil builds up.
Mr. Smalling, can you get a call to the engineer and get him to come down here and look at it, and then get back on the motor, and then y'all address it?
It's... Aaron looked at it and measured off to where our right-of-way is, and he actually, Dr. Mr. Gray told him, said, "If I ditch this on our part of the right-of-way, it's going to make it worse." So that's when we decided to get the engineer to come on.
Right. I think he needs a phone call again. It's been three weeks, and he hasn't come.
No, it's been going on. I've been here before, but I never got to this point.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll send you back here on the first Thursday of...
The month next month.
At our work study. We'll be talking about the budget some more, but we'll make some time. We can talk to you also, if you don't see it sooner.
I don't want to go to the law. My sister-in-law is the lawyer. They make a lot of money. And she's been around the world a couple of times, starting her charging clients. I don't know if I have to, but this just doesn't make sense. Y'all have equipment, you know, you told me y'all didn't have drainage money.
Yeah.
A backhoe and an operator, you got both of them.
Well, when you hit 10,000 population, you're required by law to have proper drainage. And obviously, we're over near 10,000 yet, so we just do the best we can do.
Apparently, the city has neglected that since when the hills has been there. Just walk around, common sense. Some of the culverts are covered with dirt that they were put there, and they didn't put cubs in to get a house and then bury it. Like her, you come out, y'all, you looked at it, one end of it, the dirt is higher than the culvert.
Well, we'll see what he says, and the next step may be court for us.
Might be.
You know, we'll do anything that we can do.
How could you go over on Everston Springs Road to keep the water from coming in that man's house?
If it was on our right-of-way, then we have the right to do it.
And you had it right there?
And if it wasn't on the right-of-way, and we got permission from him to come up there, she won't give permission.
It was right beside the road, the road and then the ditch starts.
Okay.
I saw the guy dig it. You know who it is.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next item is the minutes from the April 15, 2021 meeting. Have a motion by Councilman Smalling.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson. We're open for discussion.
Can we discuss an item on the minutes real quickly? Chart the structure of planning grant. Was that grant already applied for? Any amount of $50,000? What's the timeline on that planning grant? Do we know?
COVID delayed the grant somewhat.
Okay.
We have several planning grants going right now. We have that one that is administered through GNRC to help us with our planning for capital projects and improvements. And then we have the transportation planning grant. Both of those have already been started, and we're in the middle of them now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, the motion carries unanimously. The next item is the April 2021 financial statement.
Make the motion to approve the April 41 financial statement.
Councilman Smalling makes the motion to approve. Councilman Lee makes the second. We're open for discussion. And don't move your financial statement too far away, because when we get down to the ordinance for the budget, I'm going to refer back to it to give you a couple items to be thinking about as we go into our work study before second reading. Do you want to have any public questions, concerns? If there are none, Ms. Keisha, if you'll call first.
Here. Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the financial statement, motion carries unanimously. We do not have any old business under the agenda. Under, it will move now to new business. We've already taken care of the presentation. The next item is the annexation of the Roarke property. GNRC planners went ahead and got you out a couple of package, I guess, package of information that you can be looking at. Paul Big Fair asking tonight, they have submitted a letter saying that I think it was 110 acres. There are 40 acres of that land that is currently inside the corporate city limits, and there are 60 acres that are outside the corporate city limits. And they would like to bring all of that tract that Mr. Roarke owns into the city. If, it's the council's decision now to decide if you want to move ahead with a study for that. If that's the case, and it passes, it will move to planning and zoning, about the infrastructure studies, land use studies, different things, services that we have to offer, what we will need, what we're lacking on, what we have an abundance of. For example, let's just use water for a moment. The line that currently serves that area is a two-inch line. So in order to bring sufficient water in for that, if it's done anything with in the future, that will come about once planning and zoning has the study in place. And this survey will tell us what the needs are and not. The purpose of what we're voting for tonight is either to say, yes, we're interested, or no, we're not interested. If we're not interested, then it drops at this point. It saves a whole lot of time and trouble for a lot of folks. If you are interested, then it goes next to planning and zoning. And that's pretty much everything in a nutshell, I'd say.
I'm going to make the motion, Mr. Mayor, to annex this partial land.
This is not annex, this is just to send the study to planning and zoning.
Or to allow the planning and zoning to do the study.
Right.
Right.
The annexation will come after the study. I think I sent it out, or Keisha sent it out, and also there's a list of best practices in there that we follow to annex property into the city.
So I'm making the motion to move forward with it then.
Okay, so what I mean, the gun motion by Councilman Lee, second by Councilman Smalling, to move ahead and get the planning and zoning commission involved in it with the planners and get the feasibility study. I'll say this while we're in this discussion phase. When we get the study back, the Planning and Zoning Commission will make a recommendation to the council. And then at that time, the council will make the recommendation to accept it in the city or not to. Mr. Bradley informed me that also you can do two things at one time here. If they want to change some of the zoning other than just R1, that that can be done at that time also, and it saves a lot of work, labor down there.
I think R1 is all there is.
Okay.
But I like, why did we waste this lady's time having her up here? Somebody have questions for her?
I did have questions, and I reached out to Ms. Keisha, and Ms. Keisha, I called her back. Then I knocked, Ms. Keisha said, "I got my answers from the mayor. There was no need, unless they wanted to come." Did I not say that? If they would like to come, they're more welcome, but I said there was really no need for anybody to waste their time for my questions. Did I not say that?
Did you get that in your question?
I didn't, but...
Now...
It's fine, we always show up anyway.
You know, it's one of those things, if you want to answer a bunch of questions, you're welcome to, but...
I'm not sure how many I can answer, but...
But right now, our main goal with is to push it to planning and zoning, and we just need to be okay from the council to do that.
That's fine, it was our understanding that we were getting annexed tonight, I guess, by vote. But that's fine, and so we'll go through the process and we'll come back with R1, and then they can decide what they're going to do down the road.
Right.
As things progress, so. And the study will be for water and sewer utilities and all of those things.
Streets, water and sewer, of course, we don't have gas. But the police department, Fire Department, anything that has to do with city services.
That's fine.
What we have to move or offer or not offer.
We were going to need to provide information to you guys, or if y'all are just doing the basic study.
I think right now, everything is pretty much on the city's part to put together.
That's my understanding, just want to make sure we didn't miss anything. By the way, I'm Allison Turner with Greenlight Design, so if you have any questions, I can attempt to answer them. It sounds like you have... Well, we appreciate you coming, and I'm sorry if you come, I'm sorry.
If there's any questions that you want to ask, you know, should make an answer, make it.
Well, I want to apologize if you come just because of me, because I did delay that information to be presented to you, so... But I did get my answers from the mayor, I did have a few, so he was able to clean it up for me, so. That's fine. Appreciate you coming. That's fine.
Josh is here, we just had a few things about it. Last one, I think, come and spoke a little bit, and Richard, was that his name? He come and spoke a little bit. We didn't get a big scope of, other than just in general, what they wanted to do. And some of the properties in the city limits already. And as you know, we're going to be building a new sewer plant. So in my mind, some of the study will address the current capacity versus the new capacity, because that's not going to happen right away, and you know...
It's our understanding that there... It's our, it's our understanding that there will be capacity once that work is completed, so.
But they talked last month and said they would do a phase now that could be now, and then a phase later that could hold larger. And, um, my thoughts on my head, uh, handle the larger. So, uh, we, we don't want to waste anybody's time with the perception of within a year that that other plan will be online. That may not happen. And, uh, just that exchange will be part of those studies, so everybody's real clear about it. And, uh, because even after those studies, it may not show up that that's possible. I think you're like breathing with that.
I think that's the risk you take.
Yeah.
In the upper takes.
Speaking with our.
Neither where?
Speaking, speaking with our state planner today, of course. Her recommendation on annexing properties is to do it with no expectations of development. And to not make any promises or any concessions towards the development. Because a lot of things can change in that time, and it's just something I wanted to.
So state planner said, recommended to annex it?
No, no. She said to not make any concessions or to have any expectations. If you annex it as it is at this time.
Right.
Not that you would annex it in anticipation of, of large development of any type. Because of financial needs, loans and things that could impede this. And, uh, I know what I was thinking about was, in the past, when this is done, the process has changed greatly since we've done it last. No one at this table has been involved in that process. I was involved in the last process and I was familiar with the way they had done it prior to even that. And, uh, a lot of the promises, a lot of the concessions, a lot of things ultimately fought through. And the people here that are promising those things, may or may not be here when it comes to fruition to do those things. So those are just important things that should really dive deeply into that study. To just put them on paper instead of just leaving them out there, because that's been a problem in the past.
My favorite, Roarke, just asking annexing is kind of.
Right, it's, it's a hundred and ten acres of, of field, hundred and six. Of, of field and basically he is asking that that field be brought into the city corporate limits. And that's what we're here tonight to say, yes or no. And, and like I said, if you say no, then it saves a lot of trouble down the line. This is the new best practices that the state is using now.
So let me get this right, we're not annexing, we're just giving, saying yes or no, permission for it to go to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning will do their studies and so forth, and then it will come back to the council. And then the council will say yes or no, if they would like to have it in city limits.
That is correct. The, the planning and zoning commission will make a recommendation with that ready in session.
Okay.
Everybody clear?
No, I'm not. Because the way I understand, right, the plan, the planner said, go ahead, annex without any, without any promises.
If you're, if you're doing that as the process, but the studies will answer all the questions. But we never went this route through planning and zoning with annexation things.
And the way I understand it, you might correct me if I'm wrong, if it gets, if it gets annexed, that's when y'all will do a study.
Correct, once it, it, it is annexed, then the owner will decide based on availability of sewers, what he wants to do with the property. And, you know, that's going to be dependent on a lot of different factors. And at that time, we may re, you know, request a zone change. Um, because once parts in the city, one part is out of the city, probably best to just do that all at one time. Possibly, we'll discuss that with the planning staff.
But it, it just saves a lot of time if there's a section of it, you want any commercial or anything like that.
Right.
It, it saves you from having to come back and do it all over a second time.
So, and, and hopefully, you know, the nice thing about a larger piece of property like this is you might can get a development plan for the whole parcel at one time. Not that that's a guarantee that it will end up at that down the road, but it gives you an idea of what it could look like. It just can make things more cohesive as far as roadways and sewer and utilities are concerned, which, you know, so you don't have people fighting over the driveway or the road getting extended or not getting extended. It's all laid out on the plan from the front end. So that's, that's the advantage of having a large piece of property, um, looked at in one, one big sweep. That doesn't mean it gets built all at one time. You can build pieces and phases of it as you go along, but there's expectations of what you can see down the road, so.
Well, that, that's kind of, all these things will be documented, where in the past, it's just a kind of promise and it's never been undocumented to.
Correct, and, you know, economies change and owners change.
But why use taxpayers' dollars to have the study done when they're gonna use their dollars?
What I was told today, when I asked some of these additional questions that's been brought up, um, our engineer for us has to do a study to cover our part, because their study might be different than our study. That's what I was told.
The preliminary study?
Right.
Now, in the end, their, their study will have to be reviewed by the engineer.
And agree with them.
And Aaron and the engineer will have to sign off on it.
Right.
But, but the initial cost of any of the things that we may have to do are to stay that capacity, which is all on us.
And I'm not arguing against our own interest here, but, um, in, in other times when we've, you know, asked for property to be annexed, it, city will do a due diligence to see how that affects their services, the services they have to provide. So that, that's pretty typical for the city to make a decision on whether it financially, they can, with, you know, can handle it or not. The advantage to this is you get the property and you get the taxes one way or the other. Right now, it's just, you know.
For example, Mary did do a preliminary, uh, thing, was just a, a draft of the surface plan. And we saw on the thing, this property's main access is on Pleasant Road. So if it was a large, if it's very large, city may have taken concession in.
And.
And that access would cost us quite a bit of money, which might make it impossible for us to even say, hey, you can do this. Now logically, you know, just depends on if I'm the study.
It's kind of like, one of my concerns was the two-inch water line that I found out. If I don't, if I'm, I think I heard it correctly, he said, uh, Mr. Brown, was it, what was the gentleman's name? Not Mr. Andy Lee, but the other gentleman.
Richard.
Richard, Mr. Richard made a statement that they was gonna tap in on, uh, Ball Park Road, and that's the two-inch line. So that was one of my concerns, and I was told that they can, that can't happen, so.
Couldn't use a two-inch line, we would have.
They said it had to be a six or something.
A larger law would have to install in here.
Right, so that was one of my concerns, that's what I thought that.
And that's, I get that.
Yeah, and, and they are available out there, so.
Well, and as he's saying, that's, right now, we're just trying to decide.
Right.
Are you willing to have the property and zoning, you know, under your control? And, um.
And that, that costs the fallback on the contractor.
Typically, yeah, I mean, sometimes we'll get into a partnership with the city over extending, you know, upgrading lines and things like that. Depending, you know, so we're, we're getting service, you're getting service, you know, upgraded to some other parcels that wouldn't have that upgraded service otherwise, so. You know, but the whole of that's kind of comes after this initial annexation portion. But it, it can get complicated depending on the services available, so.
So we're not annexing, I want to make it clear.
We're, we're approving a, uh, study of, of, of local services?
Yeah, I think what happened there, but he, uh, but he, uh.
What the agenda says.
The intended, it's misleading, it is.
Well, I would like to talk about this, but you thought that it was. Yes, but, except my name, but I'm aware.
So help me ask, the, the, the planning.
She's asking the timeline, basically.
The timeline, so we do that next.
For planning and zoning, when's the next plan?
Planning and zoning means, uh, next Thursday night.
Okay.
And, um.
So we need to follow up with.
I don't know if she'll have all, everything ready in the bin for it to.
But possibly the next.
To go, but, you know, it's always a possibility, I don't know anything now, so.
So we'll follow up with plans.
Her rough draft needs some information from the fire department and the police department. Have you spoken with her?
With, uh, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Yeah, I gave, we both gave our information.
Okay, because today, when I spoke with her, she didn't seem to have had that yet, or she didn't include it in her copy.
Unless there's something else, but, uh, I got an email from her several days ago and I saw where she replied back to Chief Jenkins. And then I gave her my answers too, so I think she's got everything.
Well, the only reason I said is, is the plan is only meeting next Thursday. She's got a preliminary draft of it, pretty well done. So everything we can do to expedite it to get her hands on it, make it that process faster, I'll throw that in.
Most of the engineers work, so.
Yeah, and she could take months, weeks. I do appreciate you coming.
Great, thank you.
Great to have you down there.
Uh, the, uh, the motion is to pass the study on if the city council is interested in, uh, uh, doing the study for the annexation of the, uh, we don't even, well, I guess there's a map number and all in here for it somewhere or something.
Yes, uh, yeah, I got it.
You, you really need to put the map number and then in the minutes.
Uh, map number forty-eight, parcel zero forty-seven. Seems a hundred and six acres.
Well, roughly sixty-six acres is what, what we're wrong with the city.
No, no.
No, it's a hundred.
It's a hundred and forty acre farm and.
That's right, but forty percent of it is already in.
Thirty's already in, so, and about a hundred and six is not.
Okay.
What did you say the parcel number was?
Twenty, uh, parcel number zero four seven. At forty-eight.
Any other discussion? Ms. Keisha, if you have a call for all parties?
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries unanimously. Would you please follow up with, um, with, um, Ms. Turner tomorrow to see if that needs to be on next week's agenda?
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
The next item is, uh, can look great to, uh, be okay to take the cross connection training and to, uh, to take the test. Uh, also as part of this motion, if you would include what's the, the test is taken and passed, uh, the amount of rays that would be given on that, I think it's fifty cents for cross connection.
Yes, sir.
I'd like the motion to, uh, send the table grade cross connection training and on completion, upon passing that, be given fifty cent raise.
Second. Okay, we have motion by Councilman Lee and second by Councilman Brown. Other discussion?
Is there a class scheduled for him and how long it might expect to take for this?
Um, I, I believe June is the next one that he would be available to take. Um, but I'll have to look Monday when I get back and I'll email and let y'all know the exact date.
Because it's gonna be that same budget, I guess.
Other discussion? Ms. Keisha?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Let the record show, the motion carries unanimously. Next item is resolution R zero five two zero two one dash one. An unclaimed property resolution that the state requires us to pass every so often. We'll get a motion in a second, then a fairer's discussion, Ms. Keisha will be happy to answer any questions.
I'd like the motion to pass the unclaimed property resolution, R zero five two zero two one dash one.
We have motion by Councilman Smalling.
Sir.
And a second by Councilman Lee. Open for discussion.
You could talk to us about this, was there a dollar amount known to this amount of unclaimed property or?
I think it was like a hundred dollars.
Reason, reason I brought it, I had experience with unclaimed property recently. And it was more than what they told me it was when the check came, so, same.
It actually came with the police, this is the one that came in, it was five hundred dollars, what it said.
So, so you know exactly what it is.
Yeah, it's what the letter says.
I don't know, I thought mine was one way, but it was more than something, okay?
Any other discussion? Ms. Keisha?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Yes.
Let the record show, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is first reading of ordinance zero five two zero two one dash one. Uh, it's setting the tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Uh, this will take two readings and, uh, there is no increase in this one as of this time. Uh, it is still set at the current rate of one dollar and thirteen cents. So, um, when we get ready for a second reading, if there's any changes that need to be made, uh, we'll, we'll have a public hearing on it at that point. Open for motion.
Make the motion to pass on the first reading ordinance, zero five two zero two one dash one, tax rate for twenty-one, twenty-two, wait.
I second it, Mayor.
Have motion by Councilman Lee, second by Councilwoman Head to, uh, accept ordinance zero five, first reading is zero five two zero two one dash one. So any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can you speak on the financial things that you were talking about for the budget?
Uh, I'll get into that when we get to the budget ordinance.
Well, that's, I was just concerned that that might affect the tax rate.
I'm just gonna head, and next month, we probably need to put passing the budget first and then the tax rate. Um, not that it's a, a big deal because we really pretty much know what we, what we're gonna do, but, uh, it just. If you set the tax rate, then you got to make the budget match it if it doesn't, so. Any other discussion about the tax rate? Ms. Keisha, if you have a call for her, please.
Smalling?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries unanimously. The next item is first reading of ordinance zero five two zero two one dash two, it's the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, we've been having budget meetings, uh, about this, uh, for, for several weeks now. But I do want to, uh, to call your attention to one item, we're not gonna do anything about it tonight. But, uh, as you get ready to come to the work study, where we will definitely be discussing the budget, uh, a little bit more. If you will, uh, if you will take your, your budget and look at your property taxes current, it's on the page one there, pretty, pretty much about the middle, where it says, uh, three one, one hundred. Uh, we have our current taxes. You, you can see the history of it in two thousand and nineteen and twenty, where we're at four hundred and ninety-five thousand. Uh, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, we thought we would have substantial growth, uh, during that period, so we upped it to five ten. Uh, as we started working on the budget, uh, this year for, for fiscal year twenty-two, we kind of kept that amount the same. If you go to your financial statement on, uh, page one, under that same line, item thirty-one, one hundred, you will see that we are currently at four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We don't really expect a lot more money to come. We don't really expect a lot more money to come in during that period of time, about the most, if you look at previous audits and things, we've hovered more around the four-seventy-five. We might have got the four-nine once. So what I'm asking the council to do is look at that number seriously and also the delinquent taxes and the penalties and compare those. Because you have an extra month of material here to look at, you can kind of maybe make a more educated judgment for what we need. Those numbers are just a little bit inflated, in my opinion, and I would recommend that you push them down a little bit more to what your audits and your former budgets reflected that to be. However, when you do that, let's say you, let's say we take in five thousand dollars a month for May and for June and we get an extra ten thousand dollars of property taxing. That's still going to leave you about twenty-five thousand dollars short and you know that how hard it is to climb twenty-five thousand dollars. So do you leave it inflated and take a chance that fetch one to the lead? Or do we continue to stay on the downward turn that we've been for the last, last two to three years of that? There's no doubt that there will probably be some more building, but we don't have a lot of places left for people to build.
We got a chance to.
So we got the chance to, but it'll be at least a year before any event would come about and as Aaron has stated, we only had like two additional sewer taps last year. So there's not a lot of growth and the census estimation is we gained about two hundred, a little over two hundred people. So we're probably hit pretty much where we are and I just want you to look at that and consider it before we meet at the work study to discuss it. You may not want to make any changes or you may want to make some changes, that's going to be totally up to you. But if we didn't make those changes, then we got to figure out where we're going to put services for it, if we're going to help, we've got to lower our service and that too. Anyone else have any questions? Once again, this is first reading on the budget. We will have a second reading of the budget will be printed in the newspaper at least ten days prior to the second vote. And we will, we will have a public hearing on the budget.
I'd like to motion to pass ordinance zero-five-two-zero-two-one-dash-two, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
I second it, Mayor.
Have motion by Councilman Lee, a second by Councilwoman Head to pass on first reading ordinance zero-five-two-zero-two-one-dash-two of the twenty-two fiscal year budget. Ms. Kisha, whenever you get ready to call for her.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Lee? Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries unanimously. And also, I'd like to thank the council, all council members, Ms. Kisha, and all the members of our departments that came during our meetings and members of the public that came and offered input on that also during this time. Next item is the reading of ordinance zero-five-two-zero-two-one-dash-three, fiscal year twenty-two sewer rate budget, or the sewer budget. It includes a rate increase in that to try to help make it balance, so.
I make a motion to pass on first reading ordinance zero-five-two-zero-two-one-dash-three, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two sewer rate increase.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown.
Second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson. We're open for discussion.
Can you speak on the history of these rate increases if not working on that, if you didn't do one previously?
Very supposed to per the comptroller's office and a previous consent order that we were under that we follow the economic guidelines of the consumer price index or a minimum of two percent increase for water and sewer every year. We have been able to maintain that two percent increase with services that we have improved. Probably the best example that I know of is the utilization of the water tank for the Verizon cell phone lease. All of that money went straight into water, so it has helped that. Most of what is happening now with sewer is the wipes that are getting into the system and it's clogging up the pumps. And as you will notice from your previous budget statements there, we've spent probably close to ninety thousand dollars on pumps and a lot of that can be attributed to wipes that are in the system. So. We've got to try to keep an amount going, which we're supposed to, to fund depreciation there also. You'll notice our line in depreciation under our new budget. And water is going up like it is supposed to, but in sewer is actually going down, so.
Those things you just spoke of will be in the capital improvements, bring kind of sort of the additional revenue brought in for allocating.
It's not in anything right now, it's just in trying to keep your head above water, so to say.
I'm really not understanding why we got to raise it two percent when we've got probably a million dollars in reserves.
Kisha, how much do we have in reserve right now for sewer? Any idea? I don't think we have a million dollars in reserve.
I think that's what we put in his audit. I didn't write my audit.
I know in the year two thousand and fifteen, we were supposed to put back three hundred and sixty-seven thousand in that year.
So aren't we required though by the state of Tennessee to raise this rate though? And that's the reason, that's the reason mainly from the motion is because I was in assumption that we had to.
Right. But you don't have to do it, but when they come calling, then you've already been presented with that letter of the council from two thousand and fifteen forward. The date, did y'all make the date on that letter or was two thousand and fifteen?
I believe it was. Ms. Lee, did you get a chance to look at that letter?
Yeah, last over, I got a chance to read it early. But another thing bothers me too, you told us here a while back that the comptrollers, I guess the comptrollers office, I might be wrong about that, but our sewer rate was sufficient to fund an eight million dollar sewer plant.
It's, that is what they had told us at this point and we'll get into that a little bit more when we get down to a couple of resolutions from now. But the fact of the matter is, comptroller's office said we need to raise it two percent every year. We didn't raise it any last year.
Did we raise a card for that, Mr. Mayor?
It was raised prior to that as part of the plan. Now, when we were under the order before that, two thousand and fifteen, I think we raised it eleven percent. Two thousand and sixteen, it was eleven percent. Two thousand, one year it was ten percent, the other two years was eleven percent. And then the order said that it be two percent thereafter.
Thereafter.
Now, that's why I read it. With water, when you raise water two percent, you automatically get two percent for sewer. So as part of the plan to build the sewer plant that the revolving fund told us in two thousand and, oh, two thousand and sixteen, what we had to have to build the plant gave these percentages and that, that two percent that was done in two thousand and eighteen was actually already voted on by previous councils. So as far as I know, this council and the council previous to this one did not vote any increases whatsoever because the previous council had already voted it for a three-year plan to take care of it. It was that or it was going to basically give the system over to the state to take over. That was part of our agreement.
I've had citizens to call me and be very upset. I will be honest about the two percent because they don't understand it. They feel like we're just doing it. So I did explain to them that it's on file, they can go up and do a request form and see that we are mandated to do this. And then I don't know if any of has or not, but I think it's, the citizens need to know that this is mandated state, I mean, order that we have to do it. It's not because we want to do it.
Well, let me say it like this, you do not have to do it. And you're the council and you can do what you want to do here, but take a, take a look at your budget, go to the. This is your proposed budget for twenty-twenty-two. Go to page seven.
The blue budget.
When you just. Page seven. Okay, the line that we're actually discussing is three-seven-two-one-zero, sewer sales. Okay, has everyone found that? Okay, as you come over, you notice in, in two thousand and nineteen and twenty, you had the eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars there. That's your entire sales of from sewer collection. You'll notice that in twenty-twenty-one, you had eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. So you had a, a twenty thousand dollar increase. I figured it up, but I don't remember exactly what percentage that was. But, and that was with no increase last year. This year, we have a two percent proposed increase and that takes you to eight hundred and sixty thousand. So, so basically what you've done, you have climbed twenty thousand dollars from the year before to this year and then you'll be gaining twenty thousand with this two percent increase for next year. If you don't pass this increase, then it just drops that back to eight hundred and forty thousand. And what is happening there with us having pumps that are going down, us replacing them, that is coming straight out of that now. Let me say this, our fund is a small enough fund by us being a small utility that water and sewer can be combined. So if you have, let's say you have a million dollars in reserve in water, then it can be distributed out across both. There was a push last year to separate those by legislature. It didn't, didn't make it last year. I don't know if it was discussed any this year. I haven't heard anything about it. But if you go down to your reserve and depreciation line that I was speaking about earlier. Line item six-thirty-two on page nine. Okay. Compare that, just bookmark that for a second.
What line?
Two.
Two.
Six-thirty-two.
Six.
Six, six-thirty-two. And get the line six-thirty-two on page eight.
We're down forty thousand in progress here.
Okay, just do the comparison. You went from a hundred and thirty-six thousand to a hundred and ninety-three thousand and this year you're at two hundred and forty-six thousand. We bought a lot of items out of that for, for water, the excavator, trailer, we purchased two vehicles out of that. But I think we're very safe in what we have there for our amount. But when you come over to six-thirty-two on page nine and you look at those same three comparisons and if you take an additional twenty thousand out of that third column right there, it's going to put you down to eighty-two thousand. Is, is that enough? Do you want to take a chance on it? Do you not want to take a chance on it? This is y'all's ballgame. All I do is make a recommendation.
I just don't want to put no more burden on us. It's not going to affect me growing my own sewer, but it's going to affect a lot, a lot of citizens though. I think so. Our campaign slogan is to pass with, listen to the voices of the citizens.
Well, thank you for that recommendation.
Let's see, how much was that increase? Fifty-three cents, does that want to come through? It takes it from.
Any unbudgeted repairs, would they come from that depreciation reserve or would it come from the fund balance?
You have a budget set and right now, now you've already done one budget amendment for sewer because of pumps. It came from fund balances, best I remember.
The last pump?
When we did that. The last pump, I think we took it out of reserves.
But not, not from the depreciation line?
No.
Depreciation replaces.
And when you get into the depreciation issues, I'm going to be honest about it. The comptroller's office is the one that handles all the depreciation issues and all I can do is submit it for that. But you've got a gentleman back here and I mentioned it, Aaron, at our, at our planning session when we were discussing the budget and you might want to take this opportunity to address the council about it with, with the cost of materials from China.
So I spoke with our supplier that we get pretty much everything except for major like pumps and things. Any kind of repair clamps, water meters, anything to do with water taps, all of that stuff. The majority of it is being made in India. And with the state that India's in right now, they pretty much shut everything down. So they're not able to get anything from them, so they tried to start getting things from China. Well, China up their rate or some kind of tax or something, I'm not sure what it, what it was exactly, but, so that made. I'm not sure what it, what it was exactly, but um, so that made it higher. Well, then apparently the president um, decided that he was gonna put higher tariffs on them because they did that. So now that makes it awful on us. So now we're paying even more on top of that. So uh, they tried to start bringing things in the country and buying from suppliers in the U.S. Which, when they did that, the price is a lot higher and the wait time is significantly longer. Um, and he said not to wait before we order things when we're, normally we'll wait till we got just a couple on the shelf before we reorder. And uh, he said not to do that because what has previously taken a week to get, he said could take two to three months now. So um, and the price is gonna be significantly different.
Uh, will you give them the example like you gave to me, like a part cost a hundred and fifty dollars, it'll be, I think you said three hundred?
Yeah, so like, just say some of the fittings that we use are like around a hundred bucks a piece. Uh, it, it, it could be anywhere from two fifty to three hundred dollars now for the same part. Uh, and it's all because of all this mess and, or at least that's what they're saying. Uh, but so that's gonna, that's gonna eat into water uh, and sewer. Uh, but it, it's really gonna make a big difference on the water side because like repairing leaks, doing taps and all that. We go through a whole lot of those kind of things. Sewer side, we go through more uh, the pumps and like oil and things like that, filters and and controllers and things. So it, it's different cost in both, uh, but uh, everything's going up. I mean, it's just like I had a quote to build a porch. Uh, he said two years ago would have been five thousand dollars, now it's fifteen. So that's just a small weight for twelve porch, so just to give y'all an idea. And that's the level. Does anybody got any questions for me?
Are you stocked up on stuff or?
Yes, yes, we uh, I made sure to make a point to let all the guys know that we need to stay on top of that because we don't need to get to where we have to have something, especially if something breaks and we gotta have some other placement, you know? Because uh, there are certain areas around here that you can't shut the water off. And if we don't have a repair plant to fix it or something, you know, we'd be in bad shape. So uh, yes, we are definitely gonna be staying on top of all that, so.
Okay, thank you. The uh, the bottom line is here, if you don't want to do the increase, there's two ways to handle it. Not make a motion to uh, to uh, pass this ordinance or make the motions and then vote it down.
There is a motion.
Yeah, yeah, the motions on the floor, so I guess that that puts the option down now to just vote it down.
I just want, I was gonna add one more thing, Mr. Mayor. We, we just passed a reading, first reading of ordinance zero five two zero two one dash one of the tax rate to not increase the tax rate. And albeit that is what I always want to do is not increase the taxes, have no desire whatsoever. But I feel like the state is gonna continue to breathe down our neck with the, with the oncoming, and we're gonna talk about this next, the resolution of R zero five two zero two one. We're gonna begin the planning and providing the financial piece of the construction of wastewater facilities project. A very large project, probably one of the biggest ones that was one that's probably seen, I, I would assume in all of our opinions. Uh, and I don't know what cost onset that we're looking at there. I certainly don't want to put a burden on top of a future burden that's coming. But I do know that it seems to me just hearing, you know, just being on this council body for two years and hearing Aaron speak, there is a, it's one of the most expensive bodies of, that's that our city controls. And it's concerning of how expensive it is, uh, bigger than streets even. I mean, it's just, it's just massive, the millions of dollars that goes into these pumps and and uh, lines and and just manpower itself and everything else. It's a burden that is really heavy on us. But we, we've gotta make a decision whether or not we're gonna, we're gonna supply the, the needs to be met. Um, and it is a tough decision, but I, I also know that the state will continue to look. And it seems like every so often we get this letter to, to our, to our city that says, hey, you need to do something about this. You gotta increase these rates or otherwise you're gonna not be. And I don't know what, what repercussions occur if we don't. Maybe you can speak a little more to that mayor if there's any repercussions at all. But, but I certainly know that we've got, we've got to keep, find some sort of way to match the weight of what's going on out there with our sewer and our water system. And unfortunately, it's, it's one I don't want to do, but I think, you know, at some point we have to do something.
Okay, I have a question. You said in two thousand fifteen, we had to increase eleven percent. Okay, my view, this is mine, I don't want to see eleven percent have to happen. If we do a little as we go here, it is a burden, I get that, it is gonna be a burden. But I think a two percent is better than having to wanny on with an eleven percent or higher. Two years now, right? And I'm sitting here scrambling.
That turned out being a thirty-three percent.
That's what I'm worried about.
Was to recapture.
That was the decision.
Previous year.
We don't have to do that no more.
So we would be in future of the same pre-cancels, recapture something.
Yeah, we aren't doing it as we go.
What she's saying is what if, what if the, what if the three body of council members now have to, have to get caught with that again? They come out again with a high amount because we haven't been doing it.
Well, that's the main purpose of building this new sewer plant is get it to get in the guidelines that state wants us to be in. That's why we'll build this seven point five million dollar sewer plant.
But in order to afford that plant, we've got to put money in there.
And you've got to pay for this plant.
Well, I'm afraid, but uh, but they've already told us our current rate is sufficient to pay for it.
We've got a letter on the table about overruns coming.
And that's fine.
And overruns on the cost of the plant, right here in the minute already. That's not budgeted or not either the nail size by the state at this point.
Did you find that in the audit?
I would look at, I was talking about those stuff.
I mean, I don't want to see us have to increase, but I'm one of those rule followers and the state is telling us. Though they said we have enough, they're telling us we need to do it two percent.
They're recommended, not telling us recommended.
That, that reserve line is roughly four pumps. We had to do that again next year. We need that.
Was we ordered, what, Mayor, are we ordered or is it recommended? Mr. Lee says it's recommended, it only.
Or how do you get their letter with them?
I don't know.
They also have, it also states in there that you can lower expenses. And we already know after one new land, I mean, that there's gonna be.
I'm just repeating what you told before.
You know, if you've got the letter, then man, that will.
Do you have it printed to your email?
I've got it right here somewhere.
What is two percent? Is it fifty cents? What is it on?
Thank you, it's fifty-three cents.
On the total bill somewhere?
Yeah, it, it'll push, uh, it'll push sewer to in, inside the city, it'll push it to forty-three dollars. It's forty-two, forty-four now.
Okay, so you said the word shall means required, correct?
Yeah, shall means required.
In order to correct these deficiencies, the board directs the city to comply with the following corrective action. And on down here it says, the city shall implement an annual automatic rate increase based on the customer or consumer price index, CPI, but no less than two percent effective July one, two thousand eighteen, July one of each year thereafter.
And it hasn't been raised any since two thousand nineteen. Council got that letter in, in May, just what, what's, there's a date on that letter.
Sixteen, two thousand sixteen.
May, just May.
September.
September, okay. When, when we did the, when we did the uh, uh, the budget, uh, obviously we, we were pressed. I mean, ten percent is an extreme amount of money.
Yeah.
And uh, course, and again, like I said, they, they gave me originally, they gave me ninety days to come up to three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And you'll notice from your, your entire sewer budget today is only eight hundred thousand.
Air, air burden, you know, that we might need to explore on our tap fees and things.
Right.
Uh, you've already got probably one of the highest tap fees that there are. We, we adjusted all of that trying to capture income. Uh, Aaron's supposed to be putting in so many new meters every month, uh, when they hit an amount, we're, we're gonna, basically the only thing left that he can do to capture revenue back down is get these lakes under control. Uh, that, that has to happen. That's the next thing you're gonna be making on the board now. Uh, they wanted it at twenty percent or less and.
The last was thirty.
Third one. So we, we're gonna have to get that down and, and Aaron's worked on some things. He's got some water lines picked out. Uh, we spent forty-two thousand dollars plus putting in a, a new water line on the pumping station road. Well, he, he's asking to put in a new water line on uh, U and Car Road. And if he puts in that entire line, we've got to have the engineers put in the new line. You're probably talking over a hundred thousand dollars there. So you can wipe out the, uh, it, it probably closer to three hundred thousand to be a hundred, based on what, how many, how many yards was that went down? Like a half mile was it?
I think it was uh, it, I, I think five or six hundred feet.
It wasn't even as much as I was thinking it was.
I think.
Well, I'd like to say for myself, since one council member has pointed it out, I do believe in listening to the citizens. I take many phone calls, I talk to them in public. I believe in listening to the citizens. Uh, they are the taxpayers. But when I am ordered by the state to do something, I took this, what I call it, the job or privilege to do this. And when I'm ordered to do something, I have to go by the order. It's not that I want to do it, I don't want to put the burden. Um, some people might look at it as fifty-three cents. To me, fifty-three cents is fifty-three cents. Um, and it might put a burden on a lot of our people and our citizens. Um, but I feel like I myself, I'm speaking for myself, um, I have to do what the state has ordered me to do.
Question, call for a question.
Miss Peshaw, if you'll call for a vote, please.
Lee?
No.
Wolferson?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Like for record, reflect, the motion carries four votes to one. The next item on, on the agenda, and I might uh, digress for just a second and say that may be something you really want to look at for a second reading. And, you know, do some more research on it and see where, where we are.
Some need to.
Uh, the next item is resolution R zero five two zero two one dash two. It's the Clean Water Fund number eight for twenty-two one, resolution number four fifty-seven. Uh, this is what we've been discussing of, uh, about the new wastewater treatment plant facility. This is basically the council authorizing the, uh, the issuance of the loan. Uh, resolution number four fifty-seven is, uh, the total project cost is six million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that was given. Uh, from the Clean Water Drinking Fund, uh, they're giving us two, two million, five hundred thousand. You will notice from the paperwork, there is a five hundred thousand dollar grant fair, but as part of that fair, calling it, uh, what do we call it? Loan forgiveness. Principal forgiveness. So they've changed the name up to give it.
It's not being with great.
Principal forget, it basically is a grant. Uh, you don't have to pay it back. Uh, I was told that, uh, we would get a minimum of ten percent, so a minimum of ten percent should be six hundred and, six, uh, six hundred and plus, so, uh, I don't know if that is updated, they say go through or what. Oh, let me invest in it. And I sent an email to everyone, I think it was Friday, I mean, I think I sent it, I don't know what that came in now. Uh, obviously, we didn't have this resolution voted on. And there's quite a bit of extra paperwork that Miss Peshaw has been working on with Title VI, the projects, training, uh, and that's what some of the other stuff was. It was, and it was a package of stuff for this application. And uh, they were supposed to vote on this application this week, today as a matter of fact, I think. So it wasn't ready. So now the uh, application and the vote from the Water Board will not come until the third week of June. Our bid price runs out June seventh. So the guaranteed price of a bid at that point is low and void. Uh, the engineers have reached out to W and O and asked them would they still honor that and keep the bid active. They said they, they would honor it, uh, till June. However, uh, with price increases being so volatile, they reserve to write passing all of that on to us. I looked at that, when you say you, you reserve right of passing it on, that's almost like a blank check.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't like it. I don't know if it was the state that dropped the ball on it. Uh, there hasn't been time to research it as of yet. Uh, I don't know if the engineers dropped the ball on it or what happened, but nevertheless, we don't have the okay to begin construction June seventh. So I'll pass that out for your consideration. You can, you can consider what you want to about it, read into it what you want to about it. This is a one reading resolution. Uh, it's not a chance to come back later and, and say, well, you know, I want to do this or I want to do that. Uh, it's, it's here tonight. I might call your attention to page ten. Item number K. And it's telling, if you haven't read this document, it's telling you as the council of what you're committing to there. And then as you turn over to page eleven, item number eight. Uh, it starts with number eight there and basically repeats it again. So uh, I was always taught that in the Bible, when something was repeated, it meant that it was important. So uh, or the inspiration wouldn't have been there to repeat it in the Bible twice, so. Uh, they have the inspiration to be sure to put this wording in this document. And the second document reads exactly the same. The only difference is it comes from the uh, the revolving loan fund and it's a different amount of money, so. But the two together is what make up the, the consolidated or the uh, total amount of funds for the plant. And as Councilman Smalling pointed out just a minute ago, and what I've been trying to reiterate at this point, uh, when I started this journey in two thousand fifteen, it was one point nine million. Uh, we're at six point six million now and uh, with concrete going up the way it is, uh, I, you know, they, they made the bid and I was glad we had the bid locked in. But now that's all falling apart.
Are there more future opportunities to reply with revolving loan fund? Are there more future opportunities to reply with revolving loan fund? Get additional monies to cover some of this overrun?
Uh, there is a section in this document that addresses that. Uh, you're under a consent order with the EPA and TDEC. Uh, I've said all along that I feel like the, uh, the loan would be made to the city, but, uh, in, in voting for this document, you're saying that you will pay that cost.
Uh, we haven't talked about it very much. I am kind of hesitant to bring it up in this, but the state money for the coronavirus relief, I know we don't have any definite plans for that money, but that is something that I think the situation will be more comfortable to accept because it's not allocated towards anything at this point in time. And that's, how much was it, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, this is already in the plans and the works. I don't say that that money is available for it. Uh, they, they might give permission for it, but with this consent order, you're looking at probably putting every bit of it into the collection system.
Cause I, I know it's acceptable to do this with that, but you said the projects are in the funding stage.
And we've applied for no less than three CDB G grants to help us with this and we were turned down on every one.
Was there criteria that they think that was the reason? Uh, is it just a blanket turn down because of lack of funds or?
People that needed it personally? Yeah.
Every time we look at top of the list.
What about if we go, okay, you said we're already, it's, the dump is dead. The deal is done, so we can't. What about if we go back and we bid it back out again? Yes, there's going to be more, but at least we won't have a blank check. We'll actually have it mailed. What about if we do that, mayor? What is the, what do you think about that?
I think that the cost probably would increase a lot more. Um, really, you're asking a question that, that I don't have an answer for. I'm, I'm speculating and, and, uh, I think anyone is like asking, uh, anyone about how's the stock market going to be tomorrow? You can guess how it's going to be and, and have some thoughts on it, but you really don't know.
In the volatile market, we might have less bidders making the price more.
But at least we would have a number with this when we, or it's a blank check. They charge us whatever they want to charge us. Mayor, you said in this document, I think I may have found it, it mentions if the project cost goes up. It does address that some way. Am I correct? Am I right that there may, like, we can go back to that and possibly say, hey, we need more?
Oh, and I have no doubt that.
I, I think that's how this rate right here.
They wouldn't fund it because, uh, uh, they want us to have this sewer plant.
They know we have to.
They want us to put good clean water back into the environment. Uh, that's what this whole thing's about to start with. Uh, our plant does not meet the guidelines of what is required and, and even, uh, to, today in, in meetings that, that Aaron has gone to, uh, he received information about would, would, and now more new lead and copper studies begin, is it July one when that effect factors?
Um, not, not right now. I think it's gonna be, um, I think they said four years. It's gonna be in the, or no, twenty-four. Yeah, so twenty twenty-four, so three years. It's gonna be.
And you've already got to have it under control by that point or just?
Yeah. Now, you already have to have it, uh, in place by then, to what they said today.
So, so you, you just said that, I don't know if I called the point, but with a blank check, that they might not even approve the loan?
No, I, I think the loan, uh, I think all the amount of it will be approved. Uh, I don't think that's a problem because like I said, they want us to, uh, discharge this water that, that's in, in good condition, that's safe, that's environmentally safe and, uh, meets all their requirements. Uh, that, and that includes, uh, removing the ammonia and all of these.
But there's no concession for the overregime cost on that.
They will definitely have to document it, uh, anything that is over, uh, you know, but, but now we go from having a set amount of six point, what was it, six point four million, six.
They're kind of contradicting themselves though, saying, yes, we'll under our bid, but.
Right.
So they're kind of contradicting themselves. Not really.
When I first read it, I saw it in two parts. The, the, uh, the materials were, were inevitably raised, but their, their fees for.
All the other stuff?
All the other stuff like the wages and stuff would stay the same, but I guess they could still go up, but.
Well, their, their wages is pretty much dictated by federal law. Uh, they have to sign a statement.
Okay.
That is, uh.
So which?
Issue by the federal government of what they're got in mind and everybody's got many times.
Also, their expenses would possibly stay in line anyway, but the materials and stuff will certainly go up.
Um, we've all seen the news about how water's going up, how concrete's going up and it, it's very unfortunate that this didn't get, get built till three years ago, but, and it's definitely going to be a lot cheaper now than it's going to be in three years.
Oh, you're being two years from now. I'm gonna step out and be petal with the faith and make a motion to pass this first ordinance. Can we vote on, vote on at the same time?
No, they, uh, I guess they'd have to be separate because they'd have to be signed separate. One, like I said, one's coming from the drinking water fund and the other is from the revolving loan fund, so.
You make your motion? I'm gonna make the motion to pass the first resolution. I would like to second that motion up and I agree. Hold it and get your legal faith here and get going.
Okay, uh, this is the CW eight two zero two one dash four fifty-seven. It's authorizing resolution number R dash zero five two zero two one dash two. Uh, something that I did not mention while we're in discussion phase now, we had a motion by Councilman Smalling, second by Councilman Brown, uh, defending the record. Uh, Mr. Radley has reviewed these documents and he said that everything in, uh, these documents were acceptable and, uh, passed muster for his review. And there are several other documents in there, Ms. Kish, that he will have to sign and give opinion letters on. So, uh, he didn't know exactly when he needed to do that, if that was later on down the road or if he needed it prior or for, for them to okay the, uh, the, uh, loan, so. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
I feel like that in the process, you know, the overruns will be known before the checks are actually, the, the voices are actually written. And I don't want to think of bridge to nowhere has been something, but I mean, if it's too far ahead, we'll have an opportunity to figure that out beforehand.
Okay, and I, I might note this, uh, for being in the record, with us being a tier two city in the state of Tennessee, our interest rate was one point zero nine percent, but we pay that sixty percent. So the end interest rate, uh, as of today is point six five percent. So it's less than one percent. It's, it's a little higher than where, where we hope to be, but, uh, you borrow this kind of money at less than one percent. Yeah, it's a little bit, bit more, it may not have been was under a half a percent, but , uh, we're close by, so. And I might also read into the record that, uh, the, the amount of this one is two million five hundred thousand dollars and we do have the five, uh, hundred thousand dollar, uh, principal forgiveness. So it, it basically makes it two million dollars even. Ms. Kish, you want to ever get ready on which call group?
Volkerstein?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
But for record, reflect that Resolution R, this is by two zero two one dash two, past its unanimous. Now we move to, uh, revolving loan fund, SRF two zero two one dash four fifty-eight, which is the next authorizing resolution, uh, R dash zero five two zero two one dash three. Uh, it reads pretty much the same way. It is just for an amount of, we'll say this like this, small, uh, three point nine eight seven million dollars is not small by no amount. It is probably the, the biggest project this city has ever had. Uh, because back when we bought these water tanks, you could buy a water tank for six hundred thousand dollars then. You won't buy anymore. Not available for that now.
It's a cheap number now.
You were paid extra to double the size.
So, like I said, everything on page ten and page eleven reads, uh, the same way and, uh.
I'll make the motion and do it.
Second. Councilman Smalling makes the motion. Councilman Brown makes the second for a resolution to approve the authorizing Resolution R zero five two zero two one dash three. Is there any other discussion that we have to mention?
On the top of my head, the, uh, engineering face of this project, how much longer are we paying on those?
I think we have two payments left, uh, for the, uh, it was in here, it was saying thirty-five thousand dollars. I, I thought we were a little bit more than that, but, uh.
Why did that start out?
It was two hundred thousand.
So that's two hundred thousand dollars to the project.
And that paid for up to, including bid. So now obviously we were past bid and, uh, we, we have been paying that, uh, and, but, uh, the contract for construction was signed back in, I think it was May of twenty twenty. So, uh, Ms. Kish, when you, when you're ready.
Ed?
Yes.
Volkerstein?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
But re, record reflect that motion hangs unanimously and, uh, Ms. Kish will be working on getting all of this paperwork and, uh, I will ask if she would please to keep the council and, uh, all of us updated through email about the snow work process is and, and as always, I say, if you need help from the engineers, call them and the revolving loan fund is very, very available, but they need calls from you, uh, that we need this. Any other?
You spoke with Farrell Hill about, uh, maybe they said something?
I did. Ms. Kish, a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.